Good evening and welcome to WGTD's General Election Candidate Forum for the City of Racine Alderpeople, the Racine County Board of Supervisors, and the Racine County Circuit Court. I'm Bob Hagerty, your moderator for tonight's discussion. I'd like to thank all of our candidates for participating tonight, as well as the viewers for taking time to learn about these candidates. The following is the format and the rules for the forum. The format and the rules had been sent to the candidate prior to tonight's gathering. A one-minute opening statement for each of the candidates will begin each forum. We ask that they use that time wisely and talk about themselves, give their background, their vitae, and talk about why they wish to run for the particular office that they are running for. Each district will have right around 10 minutes. There will be no closing statements. The order of the candidate will be determined by their district number in ascending order and alphabetically by last name within the district. Questions will be posed by the moderator for each candidate in turn, alternating who answers first. All questions will be posed by the moderator. The moderator will be the final arbitrator of what questions will be used. Only the moderator, that was me, will have the questions in advance. This is a forum, not a debate. However, you may have response to issues where you may disagree. Please do not interrupt your opponent. Instead, a hand gesture indicating your wish to reply will be sufficient to get the moderator's attention. The moderator will strive to ensure a full and balanced discussion with the opportunity to reply. Questions will be based on campaign issues as reported and discussed in the news, in social media, as well as in your campaign material. Please keep your answers concise and to the point. Finally, during this forum, act with kindness and decorum. Thank you. With that, we will look and say that M for Mack goes first, and Mr. Mack, you have 60 seconds.
All right, thank you. My name's David Mack, and I'm running for 4th District Alderman. I'm a husband, a father, a grandfather, and as I look at my two young grandchildren, when the seat became open, I said, you know what? This is an opportunity for me to go and make a difference, to build a better Racine for them. I'm an independent thinker, and I'm a problem solver. As a problem solver, you have to be creative, and so I'm going to be able to bring a skillset to the council where I can look creatively at various problems that may occur. I also have 34 years of government experience. I built a program for Racine County that received national recognition, including recognition at the White House, and I served our city council previously, taking some time off, quite a bit of time. I never thought I would be running again, but when I look at those two young boys and I look at how they are growing up in a community that has some issues that need to be addressed, I said, you know what? I need to step up. I need to be there for them, and I need to help build a better Racine. And so, as I mentioned, I'm an independent thinker. I think creatively. I'm a problem solver. I have experience, experienced leadership. I've led a number of boards in our community, and overall, I think I can bring that skillset to the council to help guide and help tackle the issues and the problems we face today.
Ms. Schrader.
Hi, I'm Jaclyn Schrader. I think that we need to have new outsiders in our community because one of the biggest complaints I've been hearing over and over is about stagnation. The current mayor, the former mayor, the former former mayor, people have not seen any change in years, especially in our district, which has a lot of underserved communities in it, lots of issues with blight, lots of issues with economic stagnation. I'm a mom, and I have really young kids. I chose to live in Racine. I could have lived anywhere, and I want to make Racine a better place for them, and I want to make Racine a better place for your kids and your grandkids and all the ones who haven't been born yet. I have a background in geology, and I'm a scientific thinker. I look at data and I look at patterns in order to try to figure out solutions. Sorry. I guess that's over now.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Schrader, you get the first question. Today, in the Racine County Eye, there was an article on fentanyl overdoses. It goes on to say that they are inundated with fentanyl overdoses. Racine emergency responders were before the common council yesterday, or last race on Wednesday, to discuss the issue and outline the need for more resources. The request includes personnel and what we would call Narcan. Goes on to say, in 2020, 20 people died from overdoses, 21, 26; in '22, 31; and last year, 35 people died from overdoses. The question is this: What do you, as an elected official, do to help? Do you feel that this is a problem? And if you do, what do you do to help generate a decreasing number of overdoses, not an increasing as we've seen since 2020?
I support taking measures in order to reduce fentanyl. Right now, it's fentanyl. Previously, it's been meth. Previously, before that, it's been crack. We've had ongoing problems with drugs for literal decades in this country. A lot of them are considered deaths by despair. It's usually people in poor economic conditions who have mental illness issues, who just they see no other way out, and so they gravitate to these drugs. So, other than addressing the problems right now to help first responders be able to deal with this, we also need to address problems in the community that are pushing people towards fentanyl, improving their economic conditions, improving their access to health and mental health, just addressing the causes that make people want to do this. Because like, I personally have never felt an urge to do fentanyl, so I want to know what's going in the minds of the people who do and help them deal with that so that we can cut down on that, because overdoses are taking a huge toll, especially in poor and underserved areas all over the U.S. It's not a Racine problem. It's all over.
Thank you. Mr. Mack.
It's an issue that hits close to home. I have a very close friend whose daughter is struggling right now with opiate addiction, and I'm seeing firsthand the challenges and the struggles that families are going through because of it. One of the biggest issues with fentanyl is people are buying drugs, and they don't realize that the drugs are laced with fentanyl. And I went to a funeral. I helped conduct part of the service for a young man. He was 18, 19 years old, and he had bought some marijuana that was laced with fentanyl, and he ended up passing away as a result of it. So, it is tragic. We have two issues. We have supply and we have demand, and I think we need stronger enforcement, setting up, utilizing things like gang task force and drug task force to go after the suppliers of these drugs. We also need strong treatment facilities and treatment opportunities for people that are struggling with drug addiction. When I chaired the jail chaplaincy board, when we had an opportunity to hire a chaplain, we brought in a chaplain that had a strong AODA background, and Sheriff McReynolds at the time had the only jail in the state of Wisconsin that had an in-house AODA treatment plan and facility in place for inmates that really wanted help for their treatment. So, we need to enforce drug laws. We need to go after the suppliers, and then we also need to be providing treatment for people that are addicted and have these problems.
Going to our next question, Mr. Mack. Over the last few years, Racine has landed some very large and high-profile companies, such as Foxconn and Microsoft. Is this the type of company that Racine is going after as far as growth? How do you feel they should be growing, and how would you bring that type of company into Racine?
Well, you're dealing with companies that have located in the village of Mount Pleasant. It will have an impact on the city of Racine. Foxconn so far has not panned out. It was a lot of promises, and we have not seen the results of what was promised to us. The city of Racine is landlocked. We have a very difficult time bringing in new businesses because we don't necessarily have the room to grow within the community. We also are 30 minutes from the interstate to get, 20, 30 minutes to get from I-94 to downtown Racine, which a lot of companies have said have been a detriment to them relocating to the city of Racine. And then we've had issues with Insignia Rater taking their headquarters and moving it out of the city of Racine, moving it closer to the Eye. So, we need to look in and see. Development is positive. We want to encourage development, but the days of having large corporations coming in and building within the city of Racine are long gone, and we have to face that reality, and we have to look at what are we going to do? What are we going to be in the future? We've seen some positive growth with some of the private investment in apartments and condominiums and things like that. However, it's come at a cost. The city has subsidized a lot of that, and I'm very concerned about the amount of money that we've spent subsidizing these type of projects, and that's something that I'll be looking very closely at once elected, as these new projects come before us.
Ms. Schrader.
So, Foxconn ended up not working out. It was pretty, but that happens quite a lot with some of these big companies. I saw that some of, when I was growing up, you know, they'd make these promises, they'd come in, they'd stay for a set time, and then they'd immediately leave and take all their jobs with them. This happened with Amazon when I was growing up. So, we got to be real careful with which kind of companies we get. We can take advantage of some of these, even if they are going to some of the nearby towns, but one thing to address is making sure the skillsets of people in Racine are matching up with these kind of jobs, like Microsoft, a tech company. So, we want to improve education, attract kind of young professionals here that would line up with those kind of jobs. A big problem with that in Racine is unfortunately, the school district is a big detriment that makes younger people and families not want to move here in general. So, you pretty much want to make sure you have an educated work base. You have a trained work base. Even if they don't go to college, you want them to have practical skills and trades. And I'm not, I think Racine has limited capabilities to attract those businesses within the city, but you can still get some of them, because we do have some that have stayed here, like Case and SC Johnson and other ones. So, it's not like it's impossible to have companies that want to be within Racine.
One quick question left for you, Ms. Schrader. Downtown development. Where do you see downtown going? How do you, as an elected official, help downtown to move in that direction?
I think downtown is nowhere near what it could be, especially considering the amount of money that's been going into subsidizes. The payoff has not been nearly what it should be. I would like to see it be much better, because we have a great location. We're right on a lake. Cities would kill to have that location. You know, there's like, we have places that are already built downtown that are not being used very well, like Festival Hall. I feel like if we had more, built more, like had more attractions, that would also help fuel the downtown businesses that are already there. As it is, you got like a lot of restaurants and stuff, and there's just not the base for them to be able to sustain themselves without eating each other somewhat. That being said, the city also has to go into other areas, because one big problem with downtown, for instance, you can't drive to it without driving through blight, and that's an immediate turnoff to a lot of people who are visiting from out of town. They see blighted out areas, they turn back around. And you can see this in rust-spelt cities all around the Great Lakes. So, I want to see downtown be better. I want to see more attractions there. I want to see more things that would bring visitors, as well as get locals, because I've met a lot of people in our district. They don't even go downtown regularly. But at the same time, you also got to address other parts of the city and work on beautifying other districts, and that as well will help fuel growth in the downtown area and make people want to go down there, too.
Mr. Mack.
You can take a shotgun approach to development, and that's not the right thing to do. We have a beautiful downtown. We have historic buildings. My wife and I like to take little weekend trips elsewhere to see what's out there and take notes, and we have one of the prettiest downtowns, I think, in the Midwest. And I look at people that go a little bit north of us and vacation up there. Their downtown's much smaller. It doesn't have the charm, I think, that we have. We have that beautiful lake. We have the number one beach on the Great Lakes, you know, for cleanliness. And when I bring people from out of town, I drive them down Michigan Boulevard, and I show them the lake, and they think it's an ocean, and they're like, wow, this is really good. And then I take them downtown. As for the corridors going into the downtown, you know, Jaclyn's absolutely right. Those need to be improved. A friend of mine, a Hispanic business owner, just invested in a building in the uptown area. I'm trying to help him get some grants to help improve the building that he's buying. But it's going to be business owners like him that are buying up these properties in the uptown area, improving them, and making that corridor one that's safe and beautiful to go through as they enter the downtown area. So, we do have different groups working. We have a bid district working on Douglas Avenue. We have a bid district working in the uptown area. We have the downtown Racine Corporation that helps businesses relocate and stay and provide special events and attractions. And so, overall, the downtown is a jewel. Can it be improved? Absolutely. Am I concerned about some of the subsidies for some of the development that's occurred there? Yes, I am. And once again, something that if I'm on the council and we're looking to approve something, a development of that magnitude, we really have to look at how much are we subsidizing it, and where do we go from there?
I want to thank you both for coming. We'll be right back with the General Election Candidate Forum for Racine. Welcome back to the election forum, WGTD's General Election Forum for Racine. And now, we will go to the 8th District, I believe, and we see that Marlo Harmon, the incumbent, is here, and let's talk a little bit. First of all, if you'd be good enough for about a minute, tell us about your background and why you wish to run for reelection.
Well, thank you so much for having me here. I really appreciate it. I actually used to work here, so coming back is such a pleasure. My name is Marlo Harmon. I am the current incumbent for the District 8 Racine County Board Supervisor. My background is as a long-term resident in Racine, and my experience is very diverse. I actually have a background working for the state of Wisconsin, working for one of the top Fortune 500 companies in Racine, SC Johnson Wax, and very involved and engaged in many community clubs and groups, NAACP, volunteered for Big Brothers, Big Sisters programs. And all of my background really centers around how do I assist and provide services that empower residents and constituents to do better, to live better, to have a life that is full of abundance, and to represent them in a way that is integral and in a way that actually meets our needs in solving problems instead of creating problems, that work for the underprivileged or individuals who really aren't able to speak for themselves. So, my background includes a degree in psychology and sociology, so understanding the behaviors and how certain things in our community impact them emotionally, as well as in other areas in their life, and how they can improve on those, and being a central person that they can call. I have an open-door policy, not only at work, but if you were to see me on the street and say, "County Board Supervisor Harmon, I have a question." I'm very open and am free to answer and really enjoy being asked how I can improve on my votes to make residents feel better and live better in Racine.
Thank you. Ms. Harmon, let's talk about homelessness in Racine. Tell me your feeling as far as is homelessness increasing, one? Does the current number of non-government organizations, NGOs, can they handle the current numbers? And does that create an environment with opioid use? Article coming out last Wednesday, or about Wednesday's meeting, Racine Common Council meeting, where numbers were given from 2020 to 2023, from 20 people dying of opioid use in 2020 to 35 in 2023. Do these mesh together? If not, why? Or how do you look at that? But what, from an elected official's view, what can you do?
My thoughts on homelessness is that it is a severe problem that isn't just impacting Racine County. It's impacting all areas, major cities in the United States, especially since the increase in migrant participation or processing within the United States and key areas. So, the ability to have housing for residents and individuals in the county, it is a big problem. Do I believe that there is a link between homelessness and drug use and opioid overdose? Yes, I do. I believe that when residents or individuals are without a job, are without money, and have home residential issues, it will impact some of the choices that they make, and drugs and drinking typically are the choices to self-medicate or to escape the reality of the situation that they're in. As a county board supervisor, some of the things that I can do in my position is to vote for services that provide addiction counseling and medically assisted treatment to individuals and people who are experiencing those type of things. As a county board supervisor, I actually vote on things that improve our county health services programs, and being able to provide addiction services, as well as medically treated services for individuals, is something that I vote for and that I support most definitely, especially for the incarcerated. Individuals that are incarcerated, who are addicted to drugs and are about to transition back out into the community. Our health services should be able to assist them in that transition when it comes to addiction and provide them additional services so that they can be more successful in their overall outcome once they do transition back into the community. So, how I can help is by voting for increased services that help individuals that are addicted.
Ms. Harmon, let's shift gears and look at economic development.
Yes.
Racine, Racine County. Over the last few years, Racine has landed a few very high-profile, large corporations, i.e. Foxconn and more recently, Microsoft.
Yes.
Is Racine, is that the, are the mega Fortune 500 companies, is that what Racine is going after? Are they going after smaller companies as well? And with your position on the board, how do you facilitate? How do you help make that happen?
Well, with my position on the board, how I facilitate and make it happen that businesses, large and small, work to try to provide services in Racine, how I assist in that is. I'm on various committees where, when we are going to look at and brainstorm ideas or services that we would like to see as a portfolio for Racine, I provide impact, questions, answers, my experience on what I understand and know about economic development and macroeconomics and microeconomics and and microeconomics and how to, what makes Racine attractive to certain businesses so that they can come. Microsoft is one of the companies that has decided to come into Racine. And I believe that if all of the plans come to fruition that have been outlined, I think that it'll be a great addition, not only to attract more businesses like Microsoft, as prestigious as Microsoft, but to also attract jobs. And Racine County is one of the counties in Wisconsin that is in desperate need of more jobs for our residents so that we can keep more residents in Racine.
One quick question for you.
Yes.
And I know, how do you answer this quickly? Housing growth and housing equity. Southeastern Wisconsin overall has been dealing with the idea of apartments and apartments that, maybe I'm just frugal, but $2,500 a month rent for an apartment to me is pricey. And maybe our viewers out there have a different opinion, and I'm sure you'll let me know about it. How do we work on housing equity? And how do we, and do we care about that? And does that affect our community?
Yes, yes, we care about housing. It is an American dream to be a homeowner, to be able to contribute to the economic growth in the area that you live by contributing taxes, by adding to the security of a family. I think that it is something that we definitely should prioritize, especially since Racine is a great place to live and with it being so close to Lake Michigan, it is a desirable place to live and to own a home. Yes, $200,000 something thousand for an apartment, that is pricey for me. And I'm glad that I was able to purchase a home when it wasn't like that. How do I assist in the contributions to that? Well, one of the programs that, as a county board supervisor, that I support is Habitat for Humanity. We actually provide support and financial assistance to that program. And what Habitat for Humanity does is assist first-time home buyers who may not financially are ready to go through a conventional loan but would need assistance. They can go through a program that will help them with their first home. And they also provide services in building the home and have some work hours and volunteer hours that go into the payment of that home. And that is something that as a county board supervisor that I support, that in our position, we actually monitor and try to make better because we understand that when we have more homeowners, there's more sense of pride. And when you have a sense of pride, you take care of what you own. And when you take care of what you own, it benefits the community, taxes, it beautifies the community, but it brings a pride to you as a homeowner that you just can't get anywhere else.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
We'll be right back. WGTD's General Election Candidate Forum for Racine. Welcome back to tonight's candidate forum for Racine County. And now we'll go to Arch, I believe it's pronounced, who did not respond. But Mr. Rakowski, thank you so much for responding and being here today.
Thank you for hosting this.
If you'd be good enough to take a minute, tell us about your background, what you feel are major problems that you wish to address and why you're running again as the incumbent.
Sure. So I've been a high school teacher for 30 years in Racine. I taught at Horlick and at Walden. And since retirement, I've been involved in different boards, different community projects, and so on. So I feel that this is a continuation of my community service. And two years ago, when I first ran, I knocked on a lot of doors, and I was kind of surprised that people didn't know that much about county government. And to be honest, I didn't know that much more than them. And so for the past two years, I've really been impressed by the scope and depth of services that Racine County provides and also the dedicated staff that deliver those services. On top of that, they do it very efficiently, and I believe that Racine County is probably one of the lowest counties in spending per capita in the state. That's going to present some problems that we'll talk about in a minute. I've also been impressed with the spirit of respect and cooperation at the board. And obviously, there's many different opinions and life experiences, but I've been surprised at how often the votes are unanimous or nearly unanimous. The meetings are focused on getting things done for the best of the county. That's been good to see, that at least at this local level, government is working well. I wouldn't say the learning curve is over, but I feel like I've learned a lot, and I hope to continue representing my constituents in District Three. As far as challenges, the county executive in his last budget address mentioned that previous budgets had cut into the muscle, but this particular one cut into the bone. And so I think, you know, the greatest challenge, as costs are rising and perhaps state doesn't match some of the needs, that that will become a greater issue, meeting that budget and continuing to deliver those services. As far as issues in Racine, I know a big one that's coming up is a decision on whether to remove the Horlick Dam. And that dam has been there for a long time, and the Army Corps of Engineers and the DNR says something must be done with it. I know that there are people concerned about the change in property values that would come about from removing that dam. But I have seen studies that show that after the land is reclaimed and replanted, that those values do not necessarily go down. I think the danger and why it must be removed is that we've been having more extreme weather events and that that dam poses a risk to people downstream because it could either erode along the sides or just give way, and that would be catastrophic for people down below the dam. So it would cost $13 million to replace the dam, rebuild the dam, and there's many good arguments, I think, to be made that the dam probably needs to go.
Someone to stop you.
Yeah.
Needs to go as far as being returned where there isn't a dam or that there is a look over a long-term belief of paying that $13 million to rebuild?
Correct. The recommendation is that dam be removed. And it does, at this point, it does not control floods. There's no gate or anything, so it's a concrete structure. And because it is old, you know, it poses that risk. So from what I've heard from sports fishermen, it will be a good thing that fish will be able to extend their range upstream, and that will extend the fishing area as well. Otherwise, that's one issue that's coming before the board. There are some good things going on as far as building. It's been close to 45 years, I guess, since they built new things, and we have now three buildings coming on. The first one that's scheduled to be complete in summer will be the youth detention facility, which should be a game changer in terms of youth justice. And also, I don't know if you've ever been to Quarry Park in Racine, but it is a very popular spot these days. And the beach house that was probably theirs from the '50s or '60s is being rebuilt. And then in this last budget, we approved money for a mental health center that will be built on Taylor Avenue. And that should be a real game changer. It was funded mostly with ARPA money and also money from the opioid settlement. And that will be, that will fill a need for mental health treatment and also substance abuse. And that will be a game changer as it was meant to be. That money was, you know, one-time thing, do something big with it. And I think that that will be very helpful. I also think that, you know, having that center available might ease some pressure on law enforcement if we have better treatment facilities and so on. So I think that's a great addition to what the county is delivering.
You have covered so many issues already. Let's go back to law enforcement. Do you believe that policing in Racine is the policing that you want to see happen? And how are they doing overall?
Well, I one-time served on the Board of Neighborhood Watch, so I know the importance of public safety, and I know that that largely falls on law enforcement personnel. I will remind you that, you know, the county oversees the sheriff's office.
Right.
So I, to tell you the truth, my appreciation and my, you know, understanding of the challenges facing law enforcement and the professionalism of the officers has increased over these last two years. I feel like they're doing a great job with limited resources. I do think, though, that it's important to invest in public safety in other ways, in ways that will address some of the root causes of crime. So for instance, poverty, or homelessness, or substance abuse, or mental health, as I mentioned previously. So, and I'm happy to see that Racine County is actually investing in such measures. They've started a violent crime reduction initiative, which kind of looks at the whole community and looks at employment and housing stability and all those other issues. They've started a summer jobs program for young people in Racine, so that gives a lot of people something to do over the summer. And as I mentioned, you know, the mental health facility could be a contributing factor to that overall enhancement flourishing in the community.
One more question for you. And that is, over the last few years, Racine has, well, they've landed some very high-profile economic development situations. Foxconn, of course, more recently, Microsoft, major Fortune 500 companies. Is that the goal as Racine goes out to develop economically, to look at the mega companies? Or are they looking at other ways, smaller companies, medium companies? And what do you believe is the best fit for the county of Racine?
Well, I think the hope is that Microsoft will attract some smaller subsidiary businesses I feel that Microsoft was a very fortunate turn in that whole story and that Microsoft is a great company. They've invested in restoring some waterways in that area. They're investing in improving watershed in the Cliffside Park. And also, they're establishing a data center academy at Gateway. And so they've been really great partners for the county, and I feel like that's a really, really positive sign. I would like to see more, you know, smaller developments and jobs that, you know, will be open to more people, but that could come.
Thank you so much for joining us. We'll be right back. The General Election Candidate Forum continues right after this. Welcome back to WGTD's Candidate Forum for Racine. Now, we're going to be going to the 10th district with Tony Verant and Olga White, the incumbent. First of all, a thanks to both of you for joining us. So what we'll do from here is I'll ask each of you to give a 60-second telling about yourself, what's important to you, and why you're running. And at that point, then, the other person will, and then we'll start with questions. We'll do alphabetical order to start, and then we will go back and forth. So, wow, a V and a W, but the V is still before W, so WV, VW, that's right. So, Mr. Verant, you have 60 seconds.
Boy, it's the first time I've been first alphabetically, I think, in my life. But Tony Verant, longtime resident of Racine, raised three kids, and worked in the real estate industry for 25 years, basically. Some might say I'm a fourth-generation entrepreneur through my family. But basically, was at some events and asked where I live and was kind of asked maybe to go into this position. And because I have some free time off some boards and things like that and have a little bit of time, my wife helps me with real estate, that I felt like I had the time to commit to this and help out my constituents and the folks of Racine County.
What's important to you? What areas do you want to cover?
There, what's, the couple of things that are important to me are economic development is in the right economic development, public safety, and just ethics in government and in the system, basically.
Ms. White?
I'm Olga White. I'm a 10th District County Board Supervisor. Other people might know me as the Super Tamale Lady because they say whatever I put my head on, I usually get it. I also raised three children here in Racine, Wisconsin. I'm a business owner. I own a little business called I Love Tamale's. And I've got maybe a good 15 years in human resources and recruiting as a background. I'm also a certified paralegal. And why is this position important for me? For all the reasons that, you know, a resident who lives in the city of Racine, you know, wants to see the city flourish or the county flourish. So for me, the same thing, economic development, public safety is super important to me, integrity in our system.
So we've got some agreement. Let's talk about it. Let's talk about economic development. Over the last few years, Racine has brought in some pretty high-profile Fortune 500 companies, Foxconn, Microsoft. Are you looking for the Fortune 500 companies? Is that something that you're looking and saying, that's a good thing, a bad thing? Are you, do you believe in small companies instead? And whatever companies you would like to see, or tell us if you don't believe that there should be companies, how would you go out and get that? How does the board go out and help with that process to help Racine grow? Incumbent White?
Well, I think the job that we did with bringing in Microsoft was such a fantastic thing, and we definitely needed that in our county. And we could go down a really big rabbit hole if we talked about Foxconn.
Right.
But I think having Microsoft was the best thing that we could have done for Mount Pleasant. There are, there will be jobs. You know, it's going to be a data center, and we had the infrastructure to do it. And we actually went back and got Foxconn to renegotiate those contracts this past year, which was fantastic, and it's working even better in our favor. So jobs is super important, and the kind of money that it brings in, we want to see improvement come all across the board, even for our schools, for our streets, everything.
Mr. Verant?
The one interesting thing, and I've seen it in my real estate career, it's nice that, you know, the Foxconn brought the build out of that land and that 1,000 acres and the surrounding areas. And I think so far as development, the data center is excellent, but between kind of Chicago and Milwaukee, we have plenty of developable land still left. We're one of the few counties that has that, and it's filled between Milwaukee and Madison pretty well, it's infilled pretty well. So we've got room for more growth in So we've got room for more growth and development. And when you say what type of companies, um, I think companies that are going to enhance, uh, other businesses that are already here within Racine and, you know, just generally bring some good jobs for our area. So I think we've got a lot of potential to develop more land and bring in more businesses. Uh, and I, I look forward to working to doing that.
Let's talk about policing. Do you feel the sheriff and since county, county includes the city, uh, and local PD, do you believe that their policing policies are what you're looking for? Do you think that they do a good job? And either way, do they need improvement? And if so, how does county board work in the subject of policing? And it would be Mr. Verant.
Well, I think the, the county, the Sheriff's Department does a very good job, you know, kind of working together with all the different municipalities throughout the county. Um, I kind of look at them as a leader and, and I know that they mix well. One, one area that I see them mixing very well with, with the other municipalities is with the, um, the, the police dogs in the, in the, in the, uh, the four-legged, uh, det- or, or, uh, law enforcement crews that they have. I've seen them training on various occasions in, in various places of the, the community and that's an important part of the, the public safety, um, vehicle. So far as, is, is, you know, the rest of it, I think, uh, Racine is working to try to, you know, hire more police officers. I know they're light on police officers and I'm not sure, uh, I'm going to find out, I guess, in this position, if the county has much input or help in that arena, but that's one area I think that, that the county could help the city in trying to backfill some of their, their officer positions.
Ms. White?
Um, I think that the sheriff and the police department are doing great with what they have. Um, do I think that they're 100% perfect? No, but anything that they're lacking, that's on us as a county board to approve. Um, they're, they're in our budget. So, you know, when they ask for it, I've always approved, um, a lot of the things that they ask for because I believe if they tell me that they need it, they probably do. Um, are they perfect? If, you know, are they perfect? No, I think they can improve on transparency, but at this point, I don't really have any complaints. I really do think that they're doing the best with what they have. Yes, could, are they light on police officers? Yes, but we could, we could make that better.
And I know your county, but the city is part of the county. Let's talk downtown. Ms. White, is downtown what you want to see? And, and I know that the, the, uh, the city does their thing, but what can or does the county board do when we're talking about the downtown area of Racine?
Um, well, I'm going to, do I think that downtown is a great place? I think it ha- I think it is a great place and they have so much potential. Um, where's, I'm, Racine doesn't just have to be a place of potential, though we have the possibility to be fantastic. Um, for the county, when it comes to us, when we bring that money in, when we're spending, when we're putting that budget together, um, you know, we do try to make sure that everyone gets a good fair share of it. So when we manage that budget, sheriff gets some of it, our, um, uh, agent and disability, um, they get some of it and it's, and it's kind of spread out. Uh, but we do want to see the downtown flourish, definitely. And I want to see the county work with the city. I know there's this unsaid divided city, um, and county kind of, I don't know, not working together, but I'm totally with working with, with the city.
Mr. Verant?
Yeah, it's almost like a rift between the, the county and the city in some cases. Um, I think some things that could, that, where the county can help potentially with the city and, and the thing that I'd like to see happen in the city is, is more development of a lot of the, the land that the city owns. Um, and there's also some county-owned land downtown. One specific property just, uh, just west of Main Street, uh, south of the river, there's a beautiful site there that's prime for development. There's, you know, the, the extended area along the river, the city has, uh, apprehended land there for walking trails and there's plans in place. Um, the thing that the city and the county could work potentially together on is executing and developing some of those sites. I think that's one of the biggest things the city's got to do and, and that can be part of, of business and, 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 and development, is getting the right businesses and people and, and, and businesses for that matter, in some of those locations to help improve downtown and thrive and also increase the tax base downtown, which in turn spreads additional tax base throughout the county and reduces the cost to other folks throughout the county.
I want to thank, I'm sorry. I, I just want to say thank you to both of you. Uh, it's wonderful being able to talk to both of you and about your district and about the, uh, county in general. This is WGTD's General Election Candidate Forum. We'll be right back. Welcome back to WGTD's Candidate Forum for Racine. And now we'll be looking at Branch Three of the Circuit Court, Tony Young, the judge, and Jessica Linot, who did not respond to the request to be here tonight. Your Honor, first of all, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Uh, I'm going to give you about 60 seconds. Please give us your background, how you came to be a judge, why do you want to be a judge, the issues that you're interested in, and we'll go with, from there with a few questions.
Okay, sounds good. Um, well, my undergraduate degree was in English and, um, I went on to do post-undergrad work in technical writing. And then I went on to law school, um, which had always been a goal of mine. And after law school, I worked in various areas of law, which I believe makes me most qualified, um, to be a judge. Um, I've been in civil law, family law, I'm admitted before the federal bankruptcy court, and of course criminal law. And I, um, am currently serving on the felony court, um, which is, it's definitely, um, something that you can't take lightly. And, um, I feel like just always knowing that I wanted to serve the people, particularly the people of Racine County. A little bit about my background, my dad actually served in the Army. Um, very proud of that. He's, um, unfortunately, um, has passed away, but he's born, he's, um, wasn't born in Racine, but lived here all of my life and, um, served the people of Racine County. He did race relations for the Racine City Police Department back in the 70s. And then my mother, Stella Young, she was on school board for many years and served as an educator in different capacities. So I come from a family that serves Racine County and, um, very proud of that. And I want to continue that, that legacy and that tradition.
Your Honor, what does it take to be a judge?
Oh, that's a loaded question. I think it takes everything in your being to be a judge. I think you have to have a passion for it. I think you have to be called to it. Um, and I think that you have to take each case as an individual case and not rule from a standpoint of generalities. I think you have to rule with specificity. Um, I think that comes from reading. Um, I think you have to use discernment. I think you have to be patient. Um, and I think that you have to be just. And what just means to me is allowing both parties to have access to the court and have their side heard. Um, and then the judge is there to make a decision, um, based on their knowledge and what the parties have stated to them, um, and any other evidence or facts that may come before the judge. Um, but certainly I think temperament is most important.
Your, your last phrase goes directly into my next question.
Oh, great.
Uh, how do you deal with a person? How do you find impartiality with someone you don't like?
Someone I don't like?
Well, I mean, I, I, you're in felony court.
Mm-hmm.
And whether they're innocent or guilty, you have some people that aren't real nice and may not be as respectful as others in their dealings with you.
Mm-hmm.
How do you find impartiality when you deal with that type of individual?
Um, so I have run into that a couple of times and I think that it is a skill and a balance to still be able to speak to people with dignity and respect. Um, oftentimes, it, you and I are just meeting tonight, but, but if you knew me, you would know that my voice does not change and it does not go above this volume. Um, the words that I choose to use will change. Um, and I think that when I'm dealing with a person that is irate or upset, um, I, one, I try to figure out why they're irate and upset and I speak to them, um, based on who they are and I, and what they're, um, letting me know that they're upset about. And I will tell you, I've had that happen several times in my very short time of being on the bench. Um, and each and every time, they calm down, they settle down and we're able to dialogue in a way that is helpful, um, to the tribunal and, and whatever process is happening in the court. And so I, I think it is just how you deal and talk with people, um, because we all want respect, but at the end of the day, I am there to do a job and I let them know that it's my, my court and I'm in control of my court. And I feel like I've always been respected by the defendants and the victims. And I think that, that, that is something that, um, I think you have to be, it's, it's born and not made. You just are born to do that and I feel that that is, um, the person that I am. I'm able to talk to people.
In Circuit Court, and, and this has been, boy, it's been, the, the last maybe 10 years, it's really been, uh, knock back and forth. There's a number of words, uh, uh, phrases that they call it, uh, but I, I guess I would like to, to call it a jurist that interprets the law instead of following a letter of the law.
Hmm.
Um, where do you fall in to that, to, to, to that?
I think that there are times when you need to follow the letter of the law and, um, still doing that with discernment. I think that with statutes, there's some statutes, um, like our hit and run statute. Um, I, I think you have to follow the letter of the law there. There are other times when the law can lead it, excuse me, leave, sorry about that. There's times when the law can sometimes lend itself, um, to interpretation, but I think you have to be very careful with that. And I think that that is why it's important to have a diverse bench, um, because if there are things that maybe I don't know because I've never been exposed to it, um, I have other judges that I can reach out to, um, in Racine County to ask questions. Um, there will be things that maybe they've not been exposed to and they can reach out to me and ask questions. And so I think that, um, when you have diversity, you have a better interpretation of the law on issues that maybe you've not ever been exposed to. Um, the other thing is in interpreting the law, we take an oath as judges and we take an oath as attorneys. And we have to have that be our foundation and our center. And in taking that oath, you, you really are seeking to do the best job for the people. And that's a very difficult thing in felony court. You can't, you can't make everyone happy. In fact, in fact, you don't typically make anyone happy in felony court because it's not a happy place. But what you try to do is, um, what I think is akin to restorative justice, you try to restore people and make people whole as possible, as, as much as possible, like victims that come before the court. Um, you have to interpret the law and you have to follow strict letter of the law at times to ensure that they are protected. And then there are other times when you have to listen to the defendant and perhaps their mitigating circumstances or things that have happened in their life to explain why they have made it to where they are. And then you determine, do they need rehabilitation? Do they need punishment? So there's a lot that goes into it and you have to do it very quickly.
I would do anything to spend an hour or two here. Unfortunately, we don't, he'll yell at me if I do more than one more question.
Mm-hmm.
How do you, I, I, and I'm trying to, to, when we deal with some of the laws that have mandatory minimums and you look and say, I, and maybe you don't, you, tell me if I'm, if I'm all washed up here. If there wasn't a mandatory minimum, this individual has really extraordinary circumstances that, that everybody agrees to, but yet you've got to give that mandatory minimum. How, what's in your head? How do you do that? And what do you do when you go home after a day like that?
Well, I think that mandatory minimums, um, my thought about why we've come to a society where we need mandatory minimums is because we just have not gotten it on our own, that there are certain crimes we cannot continue to repeat. And when I say we, I mean society. Um, and I'll use OWI as an example, um, because so many people are affected by that. If someone is driving and they're over the legal limit and they hit another individual, say a mother that just picked her children up, um, and is just trying to get home to make dinner for her kids, um, and that entire family is killed by a drunk driver. I think that society gets tired of those kinds of, um, non-specific victim-type crimes. And, um, so that's a perfect stranger that has now been killed along with her kids, right? So I think that mandatory minimums, what I believe they seek to do is to, is to decrease resitivism. And so what do you do when you have a person that, um, comes to your court with mitigating circumstances when maybe they've, you know, not done anything, um, before in their life such as that? I, I think that you just have to do your best to listen, um, to what those circumstances are. And if there's a mandatory minimum, you have to follow that mandatory minimum because a lot of people know this, but there are some people that don't. Judges don't make laws.
Right.
Um, we, we have to follow them just as in, as anyone else does. And so if I have a mandatory minimum that I have to follow, I'm following that mandatory minimum.
Your Honor, thank you so much. I know you came down from a, a, another engagement.
Yes.
And we sincerely appreciate that.
Thank you. And I've been talking since 8:30 this morning, so I'm a little tongue-tied and I'm just honored that you all would have me, um, here and to, um, allow me to share with you, um, some of my judicial philosophy. And I would invite anyone to come to my website or give us a call if they want more information.
And what is that website?
That website is www dot vote judge Tony Young dot com.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That concludes the WGTD's General Election Candidate Forum. We thank you so much for joining us. We hope that you learned as much as, well, I have. Have a great night, everybody.